Well, welcome to the December 7th Board Meeting. I'm Scott Levy, the Board President, and we called the meeting to order at 6:36 PM and went into executive session. We spoke about two executive session items, 2.1 Negotiation Matters, CSEA, 2.4 Board of Education Matters Succession Planning. We didn't get to 2.2 and 2.3, but we wanted to make sure that we were not tardy for all of you, and so we're here, so we'll amend the agenda just to reflect that. And so with that, I would just ask you to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as Jen said, we are very happy to have you all with us tonight because this is a special night every year, and last year we had to do it virtually, so it's much better that we're all together tonight. Just a few points on the agenda, and for those of you that don't normally come to board meetings, just so you understand what's going on, in New York State, there are open meeting laws, which basically mean that most of the items that we conduct as a board are done in public. There are certain things that can be done in executive session, but there are rules around it, like for example, contract negotiations or certain legal matters. So that's what we were doing before the 7:30 public meetings start, but again, almost everything's done in public. And next, what you'll see just over the next couple of minutes is that we have some board business to conduct. There are a lot of contracts that we look at in order to approve, and there are personnel decisions that have to be approved by the board. Rather than go through every single one, we get them in advance, we review them. If anybody has any questions, they have an opportunity to ask, but we vote on them as one block. Otherwise, we would be here for hours doing some of this. So that's what we're going to do next, and then we're going to get to the item tonight that we're all looking forward to, which is our recognition. We have three recognitions that are special tonight. And then just one other point to make, we do have tonight comments from the public on items not on the agenda, but rather it be earlier in the meeting, it's later in the meeting, just because we know we have a lot of students with us tonight and we have a lot of business to conduct, but we will definitely be having that block for anybody that does want to address the board. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adopt the revised agenda with those two executive session changes.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And then I would ask for a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda, item 5.1 Personnel, 6.1 Special Services, and 7.1 Business.
So who?
All in favor? Okay, that motion carries as well. So that is the business that we had to conduct before our special report. Just one other thing to point out, after we do the three special recognitions that are on the agenda, we will take a very short break, so if anybody does need to leave, we know a lot of our students are busy and have a lot to do and school early tomorrow morning. You can feel free to do so if you want to stay for the entire meeting. Of course, you're welcome to do that as well. So with that, it is my privilege and honor to do what we do as a tradition every year at Byram Hills, which is have our cum laude and national merit students with us tonight just to celebrate their success. It's a longstanding tradition, and I got to say, this year, not only is it relevant because of your academic achievement and the magnitude of what you've achieved, but the board has a goal of social emotional well-being this year. Mr. Walsh down at the high school has done lots of cutting-edge things around schedules and universal lunch to really think about your well-being. But we use a tactic tonight that's a little bit more traditional because it's December 7th, and instead of you being home worried about early college admissions, we have you here celebrating your achievements, and it's called a diversion strategy. That's the ultimate stress reliever, so we hope you enjoy tonight and just revel in the fact that you've achieved some greatness. There's a storied history around cum laude. It's founded back in 1906, which, as you'll learn in a few minutes, is the year that Ira joined the board. It has 382 chapters, only 12 public schools, and a lot of the schools are quite renowned, like Deerfield and Exeter and Trinity and St. Paul's. And it's 10% of Byram Hills students, which is extraordinary when you think about how competitive Westchester is in the nation and how competitive Byram Hills is in Westchester. But I think the most important thing is the journey that you all took to get to this point, and the fact that you seized a great opportunity, you used intellectual curiosity, dedication, clearly a lot of sacrifice. You balanced your academics, even though you were so strong academically, with other things in your life as well, whether it be family or extracurriculars, friends. And I think probably if you look back on your journey, you think about all of the people that were integral to getting you to this point, whether that be your teachers, family, staff members, administrators, and of course, each other. And if you remember that journey and what it took to get here, and you just apply that to whatever you want to do in your life to carry out your goals and your dreams, I know that they're all going to be successful and come true because of the excellence that you've showed in this journey. And it's also important to point out that there are a lot of individuals in your class, in the senior class, that may not have met the 10% requirement, but you're representatives of them here today. And to those that aren't in cum laude but who really did strive with academic excellence to do their individual best, that's what we want to celebrate. We want to celebrate all those students here tonight. So we're just so pleased. And then with national merit, 1.5 million students across 21,000 high schools, whittled down to 3% to get commended and 1% to be a semifinalist. What an extraordinary achievement to be recognized on a national level. And there's two monetary aspects of national merit. One, which is really well-known, of course, which is the scholarship competition that semifinalists will now enter. And then the other one that's a little bit less well-known is the fact that these are the things that keep real estate at Armonk very brisk because everybody always looks at our scores, so we thank you for that. But I think that we are just here to say to you that you just embody all the greatness of Byram Hills, and we appreciate all the effort that you put into your academics, and we're very proud of all that you've accomplished.
Thank you. When you think about being in the top 10% of your class, or you think about the fact that you may have scored on a test that puts you in the top 16,000 students out of 1.6 million who have taken a test, what does that really mean? I know that you go through your share of assemblies and your share of recognition moments where people want to give you words of advice or words of accolades. I know that Mr. Walsh has been quoted as saying that this particular group has survived things that others have not. You have had a very unusual high school experience, but you might not say it has been unusual because you've crafted it to what you needed it to be. For me, in the past, when I looked at cum laude and I looked at national merit semifinalists and finalists, I've looked at students who have made it a priority to make academics number one in their lives, to dedicate themselves to doing as extremely well as they possibly could in that area. To do that during a pandemic, to me, is something wholly different. It means that you said, this is something that matters. You had faith in your future. You had faith in your present. You had faith in your faculty, staff, and administrators who might be able to help you through this. You went home to your parents. You likely spent more time with them than you ever have before. You invested in your lives today, and you invested in your lives in the future. I love, for our cum laude recipients, Mr. Andriello gave a speech this year to you at our cum laude reception, and he asked you to do three things in your life. He said, take a philosophy class. He wishes more people have done that. He said, it teaches you to think deeply, to question logic, in an attempt to understand human nature. Well, in your role as a superintendent, I think a majority of my job consists of attempting to understand human nature, and it's why I actually love my job. So I love that advice. The second is go do something unique. He said, maybe go abroad or just do something that you have not done before. When I was a senior in college, and you can laugh, I took a ballet class for the first time ever. Melissa's going to get me for that one. I took a bronze casting class for the first time ever. Do things in your life that you would not ordinarily do. And talk about taking advantage of your time in college and exploring and taking risks. In addition to that advice, one thing I would say is true. You have all achieved so much. If you have not enjoyed that achievement, meaning you've enjoyed the path to where you are, just say to yourself in the future, I want to be in that top 10% again, and I want to make sure that I'm doing it every day, doing something I care deeply about. That is going to be the difference between you at my age enjoying what you do and you at my age achieving for the sake of achievement. So I encourage you to pick those things that you really love and spend time doing that. Some of it may result in your life's work, and some of it just may result in something that is fulfilling to you today and when you're an adult. But to do what you've done during this time period is pretty remarkable, and I hope that you've enjoyed that path with your teachers, with the staff, and with your parents and siblings, because this is an accomplishment beyond all accomplishments. When I look at my future, what's going to happen to Dr. Lamia when she's 53 years old, which I am now? I had conversation with a student on Sunday that I haven't spoken to in a long time. She lives in California. She's in her 30s. She's working for a company doing the Da Vinci robotic, she's working on that robotic surgery component in her life. She loves her life's work. She's surfing. She's doing all of that. She is fulfilled outside of work and inside of work, and that's what I would hope for you. And by the time I'm 73, I'm coming to visit one of you because you're a doctor in an area where I need a specific need, or maybe my children are going to you for financial support and help, or you are out there creating Bombas socks, or whatever else our former students have done, that is a fulfilling venture for you. So take these moments and say, I know I can do it, but what do I want to spend my time doing? Where do I want to apply all of this amazing energy? What will eventually make me happy and help me continue to grow? I know that that's a very long-winded message, but the message is true, because if you don't find your passions, and that means making mistakes and changing your mind, then you're not going to be to the point that you see others around you, perhaps your parents, finding very fulfilling lives in what they chose to do. So congratulations to you, to our cum laude, to our national merit commended students, our national merit semifinalists. I think first, we will call their names. We will have them come up, receive a certificate in front of us, and then line up behind this dais so that your parents can get a great picture of you with the Board of Education. I understand that Ira Schulman is also signing pictures tonight, right? Okay.
Okay, thanks. I also just want to mention, Dr. Lamia, that I think we have to also recognize our teachers who worked with these kids, particularly over the past 18 months during COVID. And I know the students appreciate that as well, who wanted to help in the success of our students. So I'll call up the names, and our first one to model how it's done will be Luke Abruzzesi, cum laude.
These are more for country. Yeah.
So in lieu of handshaking, we're going to do elbow. Okay? That's how I'm going to be super spread. Congratulations. And you're going to travel behind, and you'll go. Do you have the certificates?
Nope.
Nope.
And the certificates have to be in walls.
And next, Olivia Adeo, cum laude, national merit semifinalist. And Alex Iraqi Kerdila, national merit commended. Derek Iraqi Kerdila, cum laude, national merit commended. Lilly Oster, national merit commended. Alex Berkman, cum laude, national merit commended. Ryan Bernstein, cum laude, national merit semifinalist. Amelia Chung, cum laude, national merit commended. Gabriella Colabello, cum laude. Elizabeth Corelli, national merit commended. Jacob Gaiman, cum laude, national merit commended. Samantha Gluski, cum laude, national merit commended. Jake Goldman, national merit commended. Ariel Goldman, cum laude, national merit commended. Haley Gordon, cum laude. Dylan Haber, cum laude, national merit commended. Owen Kirkwood, cum laude. Sidney Levy, cum laude, national merit commended. Nora Lowe, cum laude, national merit commended. Julia Lucchino, cum laude, national merit commended. Matthew Maranazzi, national merit commended. John Dosai, national merit semifinalist. Emily Pizzarulo, Pizzarusso, sorry, cum laude. Brady Schlosser, national merit commended. Ariana Tabenkin, cum laude, national merit commended. Olivia Tedesco, cum laude. Sebastian Vasquez, national merit commended. Hayden Weiss, national merit commended. Jane Zeltner, cum laude, national merit semifinalist. And our faculty inductee to cum laude, Jessica Shaw, English teacher at high.
You guys can come a few steps closer.
So we will give a moment for families if they want to take a picture of this amazing moment here with the Board of Education and the students. I'll get out of your way.
Yeah, smile, everyone.
It's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
Once again, congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. May you have this many awkward moments for the rest of your life.
All right. So now we go to our next special recognition, which is our Byram Hills varsity girls tennis So it's easy to know where to start on this. I was fortunate enough to have the privilege to travel to Binghamton, where the quarterfinals were played by this team, and it was a very rainy day, and it was during the week, and everybody obviously had to miss class, and so there was a lot going on. And just a few minutes before the match started, you would think that they'd be pacing around, worried about playing, but no, they were literally around a table doing their chemistry work and really working as a team and working together to try to get through their chemistry. That is the definition of a scholar athlete in Byram Hills. And this team, not only are they serious about high-level academic performance, but they're also obviously unbelievable athletes, and they have outstanding character. And I think when I saw the team throughout the whole year, I learned a few clear lessons. First off, the value of working together as a team. And people think sometimes about tennis as an individual sport, but this team rallied around each other and was there every step of the way, whether there was a success or whether there was a bad play or a bad call, they were there to pick their teammates up and to celebrate in those good moments. There is no doubt, the second thing that I learned was the power of passion and of truly caring about what you do and really hanging in there with perseverance, because the season went way into November, and with everything else that the team was balancing, they did not skip a beat, and they competed just as hard in November that they did back in August when they started. They were unstoppable and unflappable. And then the third thing I learned is you never stand between a Byram Hills parent and a sports team, because they attempted to not have any spectators at the finals because of some very, very stringent rules. There were a lot of rules around the finals, which were held at Billie Jean King Tennis Center. But thanks to Superintendent Lamia and a lot of pushing, we weren't able to fix all the rules, but at least we did get the opportunity for parents to be there. And so that was really a great moment. I think that a special thanks has to be extended to the coach, who from early on in the season in August, just really saw the potential in the team and pushed them with lots of support along the way to give it their all and give it their best, and really just had an outstanding season all the way through. And I think also a special thanks to Byram Hills Athletics for the support that they gave to the team. This is history in the making, because it's our third championship team, but it's our first girls' championship team, and we care very deeply about boys' sports and girls' sports, and so thrilled to see girls go and win this tournament. And I think the last thing I would say is just I hope that this experience gives you great memories for so many years forward, and you use this as a blueprint, the teamwork, the passion, the strength to do all the great things you want to do in the future, because the sky's the limit, and the season proved that. So congratulations.
Typically, at this point, I would prepare what I've written about the tennis team and all of your achievements. I've had so much fun watching you and participating in all of the accolades for everything that you've done, whether it's coordinating the fire department and the police department to give you an escort up to the school after your great championship win, whether it's coming up to the district office and having some downtime lunch with the superintendent to celebrate a parade, which was the first in my lifetime that I participated in, which I thought was spectacular, and I saw the whole community come together to celebrate you, and now tonight. But I would be remiss if I didn't turn my speech over to Ira Schulman, who is having his last board meeting this evening. More to come on that in a few moments, but Ira Schulman has been called the voice of Byram Hills Athletics for decades. We used to joke that we were going to have to call it the Ira Schulman press box when he left, but we're not naming anything after anyone, so we're not going to do that.
That's right.
But I would like to turn what I was going to say over to Ira Schulman for his last night at the box.
Sure.
Ira Schulman?
Well, this is a great accomplishment, ladies. It's a fantastic accomplishment. We're celebrating the girls' varsity tennis team for capturing the 2021 New York State Team Championship, capping an unforgettable undefeated season. The team earned a five, I guess, love victory over Friends Academy to be crowned the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Division II State Champions. And as has been said, it gave Byram Hills its third state championship and the first girls' team state title in the school's 55-year history, something no one will ever take away from you, ladies. It's yours. Congratulations. That's great. This was the first time the New York State held a team championship at Venfert Tennis, so you go down as number one there as well. We are incredibly proud of your accomplishments. We're incredibly proud of your accomplishments, not only as athletes, but as student athletes, and your parents should be rightfully proud of your accomplishments as well. The team had a remarkable season, winning the Section 1 championship, then the regional championship to advance to the state tournament, and this really is special. You finished this season with a record of 22-0. That is fantastic, honestly. That's great. Finally, as the team returned to the high school from the tennis center in Queens, you were honored with an escort from the Armonk Police and Fire Departments, and then you were greeted by many, many cheering parents, students, coaches, faculty, and staff members. You had a pizza party, you had parades. You had a lot, but you deserved it all. It takes a lot of talent, a lot of skill. It takes depth of a team, depth, to win a state championship, and you ladies had that in spades. So on behalf of the Board of Education, to you and to all of you, congratulations on a state championship. Well done. You will walk together forever. Congratulations.
And now for another terrific uncomfortable moment. We're going to call you all up to stand behind the board and to give Scott Levy and me an elbow and be celebrated once again. I want to also, Coach Raccinelli, if you can come up to receive us with the board members, I would appreciate that, and Jessica Wolf, who has been supporting the Byram Hills tennis team for decades. I'd also like to ask Rob to come up, Rob Castagna, and Brett Alcantara to come up as well. Thank you.
This is going to be like a wedding assembly. This is how it happens in my head. I think we should probably stand chairs to let them walk. Wait for my turn.
Jessica.
Okay, all right, here we go. Lilly Anchen.
Really, the teammate.
Jordan Bernstein.
I guess if they're not named Bernstein, he's going to be on the team.
Rebecca Geller. Sidney Levy, one of our captains. Julia Lucchino. Justine Maresco. Alyssa Margolin, another one of our captains. Lila Rath.
Ladies, congratulations.
Eva Schreier, one of our captains.
Stay here on the stage.
we have some limited capacity in our small boats, and the world is certainly a stormy sea and it's vast and it could sometimes be dangerous. But when you think about Ira's board service through his 23 years serving this district, it was not so small. The first remarkable thing is his ability to stay afloat in that boat over 23 years, which is six years more than most of our graduating seniors were even born. It's just an unbelievable amount of time. And then what he did with that time, the rough seas he encountered, it's everything from September 11th and the aftermath and how that impacted our community, the budget issues through the years that we've had, when we had expanding enrollment and how to expand schools, which was a complicated task, it always is, then to see ourselves through some declining enrollment, New York State mandates coming down the pike on all kinds of things that had to be managed, multiple superintendent transitions, which were all extraordinarily successful, all the choices, all the decisions, all the votes, and then of course, more recently, COVID and trying to navigate that, which is a difficult task for anyone to do, but we were really blessed to have someone like Ira with so much experience and insight to help guide us along the way. But I think perhaps most importantly is the way that Ira served. I remember when I first was elected, Ira took me to lunch and he quizzed me and I felt aggressively. And he really put me to task to make sure that my intentions were the right intentions. Was I joining the board for every child in the district or for my own? Was I joining the board and respecting the fact that an individual on the board is powerless, it's the board as a whole that can speak? And was I joining the board in a humble way and not in a way of anything else? Was I ready to work together as a team with everybody in the district in order to create the best possible environment? He asked me all the right questions. And I think when you think about this poem and how it ends, it ends actually with some positivity. It ends with a phrase that says, "Cities of refuge rise where dangers cease; sweet silences abound and all is peace." And I think your board service ends with just a tremendous amount of hope and positivity because you have come, you've left Byram Hills stronger than when you've come, which is really the mark of what anybody can ask in a great leader and in a public servant. And I hope that you're an inspiration tonight for all of our kids that are here, all of our students, because it's an example of how an individual through many years of distinguished public service can add so much value to an institution that they love, and Ira does love this place, and leave it where dangers cease and all is peace, and leaving us in such great stead. But we will sincerely miss you, but wish you all the best in your new position as town judge, and you won't be far. I know you'll always be a friend to Byram Hills. So thank you for everything that you've done.
There's more to come, Ira.
Kill me.
So this is the roast, kids. This is the fun part. No, I'm just kidding. So I first met Ira when I was in my twenties and his children were in Byram Hills in my class. I've known Ira a very long time. I actually left Byram Hills at one point and was living in South America, had quit my job and received a call from Ira, "There's a position open at the district office. I think you should apply. Are you ready to come home?" Those are words I will never forget, and I think that we all experience Byram Hills as a place we can call home. It doesn't matter that I was gone for two years. This became my home again and remains my home today. I have so much to say about Ira Schulman's Byram Hills story, and I think it's a story about a man who has shepherded Byram Hills through changes that make us really proud to be who we are today. Ira, you helped to shape the history of Byram Hills because you have passion, and what Dr. H. Evan Powderly used to say, fidelity. During the 90s, Ira's passion was really to support an unparalleled education here in a beautiful place for children. That meant collaborating with Board of Education champions, who are here tonight, Eve Rice and Wendy Gardner, sitting in the front with Ira's wife, Betty. You created expectations for a rigorous curriculum. John Grimes was on the board, and you helped him and us to realize an approach to cultural proficiency and what the culture of Byram Hills means for our students and board members past and present. You have worked with them to ensure that Byram hired the very best teachers, yet always remained fiscally responsible. Ira, your level of passion 20 years ago as a board member is exactly the same as it is today. You care about supporting public schools for the benefit of all children. Your passion has resulted in unparalleled stewardship of our school community, which has ultimately supported programs such as science research, integrated co-teach model in special education, the Global Scholars Program at Byram Hills High School, and over a dozen new courses since 2016 alone. Your fidelity to Byram is consistent with your passion and consistently evident. Ira, you're a man who is always boasting about Byram. You've been our board member for over two decades. You've been president seven times. One of those times was during COVID, a time I could not have lived without you as the president.
Eight times.
Oh, yeah, eight. That's eight. I have a little fog over COVID fog. You tell our current board about the history of the policies that guide us today. Ira, you were a big part of the history of this board. You served with John Gebhardt, Rick Kaplan, Lynn Bernstein, Marion Hamilton, Lisa Deutsch, Amy Fennell, Wendy Gardner and Eve Rice, Louis Brusco, John Grimes, Gail Reese, Ann Tedesco, Leslie Blum, Albin Burke, Brett Summers, Mike Sanders, and the current six board members. You've supported five of the seven Byram Hills superintendents in our whole history, Judy Fox, John Chambers, Jackie Taylor, Bill Donahue, and now me. You're the voice of Byram Athletics. You follow and support our student athletes every year and share in their accolades. You can even be found at sectional and state championships and then marching in the town parade through Armonk, celebrating our athletes. You were even celebrated by the Armon Chamber of Commerce as Citizen of the Year and celebrated by our school community tonight because you've created a culture of excellence. You've supported the most innovative programs. You've embraced community partners and other stakeholders, and you continue to be a responsible and revered custodian of Byram Hills. Byram Hills District and your Board of Education are so proud to celebrate you today and we're grateful to you, Ira, for your service to children and to public education. Ira, I'm going to try to say this without crying. Okay, is that good? Thank you for your 23 years of service to Byram Hills School District, for cultivating who we now are as a district. We will miss your guidance, your compassion and your dedication. Mostly, we'll miss you, and we will not forget what you have done. On behalf of the Board of Education, the administration, faculty, staff, students and their families, your honor, we welcome you. We thank you. And now Ira has to open a gift. Open your card because I really would like to read it.
You're going to turn me into a puddle.
Well, you're going to make a lot of other people cry in years to come as the judge, so.
If you'd like, I'll read this card.
You can?
Dear what-your-name... Oh, that's not... Oh, dear Ira. No, I think I'm going to read this.
I can't undo this.
Don't worry. I'll open.
I want you to open it. No, you have to open it. Because it's so great.
Is it Pittsburgh Pirate jacket, like my old one?
No.
Whoa. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my. Oh, my. In honor of your 25 years of service to the Byram Hills Board of Education, your guidance and direction as a board member has strengthened the bond between the community and the schools. Your dedication has enriched the lives of so many, and you've been an inspiration to all you have served. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Thank you.
So the words from the board, from me and everyone in Byram, "We never thought the day would actually come, but here it is. Thank you for your selfless support of our students, staff, families and public education. Thank you for helping to make Byram Hills a place we're all proud to be a part of. Your legacy, Ira, will live in each of us. Sincerely, the Board of Education, Jen and everyone, Byram."
Thank you very much.
Get your mic.
I know there's a busy agenda tonight, but I really don't care at the moment, honestly. So just give me a few minutes of your time and then we'll get on with the board meeting. There's really no way to put into proper perspective what this night means to me. The past 23 years have just meant the world to me. To serve this Board of Education, this school district as a board member, eight terms as board president, has just been one of the true joys of my life. I could not have done this, any of it, without the support of my partner of 40 years, my wonderful wife, Betty. Betty, thank you for those evenings out, the "I don't know when I'm coming homes," that it'll only be a few minutes, I'll be right back, but thank you because without you, this could not have happened. Thank you so much. Jen read the list of board members whom I served with over all these years, and they were a wonderful assemblage of talent, but it is so meaningful to me to have two board members tonight who in my mind were emblematic of just incredible excellence in lengthy board service. So Wendy Gardner and Eve Rice, thank you so much for coming tonight. It's really meaningful to me. To all my board colleagues, past and of course, present, to all the superintendents with whom I've served, my beloved Jen and others, to the principals, Evan Powderly, Kim, so proud of you, Bill Donahue, who was a principal, people may forget, and others, the assistant principals, all the athletic coaches who strive so hard to bring excellence to their students, and the Byram Hills athletes themselves who have given me so much joy over the years watching you compete, win or lose, it's always been just a thrill for me, and I'll still be at the sideline somewhere along the way rooting you on. I do love this district, the education, the athletics, the fine arts, the music, the drama, the science research, everything about it, to me, is what makes not only this school district, but this country great because it's public education. That is the backbone of this country, and it's your support as parents of public education that makes this happen. So please continue to support Byram Hills. I'm going to be a board member emeritus in a few weeks, so I'm going to say it now. When the budget comes up, please continue to vote the right way because we need your support to continue delivering the excellent education that your students have had, will have, and those that will follow. This really is emotional, so I think I'll stop. When I leave the meeting tonight and I get in my car, I'll say, "Where did it all, how did it all go so fast? How could 22 and a half, 23 years just go by like that?" But it does, and I will happily make way for my successor. I only wish tonight, I only wish tonight that my two brothers could have been here for this. I know they're watching from above, but I really wish they could have been here. They would have given it to me to no end, but I wish they could have been here. Please continue to support us. I look forward to my next role as town justice of the town of North Castle. Fair warding, obey the speed limits. But thank you so much for this honor. I hope I'm worthy of it. In your eyes, that I am makes me feel all the better. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Just one more thing to mention before we definitely take a break, and your shoes are not going to be easy to fill, but just for the benefit of the community, I want them to understand the process, given that as of January 1st, Ira will no longer be on the board, so between now and January, of course, he will. So the board has three options in terms of how to proceed. One is to appoint a successor. That appointment would only last until... So just give me a few minutes of your time, and then we'll get on with the board meeting. There's really no way to put into proper perspective what this night means to me. The past 23 years have just meant the world to me. To serve this Board of Education, this school district, as a board member, eight terms as board president, has just been one of the true joys of my life. I could not have done this, any of it, without the support of my partner of 40 years, my wonderful wife, Betty. Betty, thank you for those evenings out, the "I don't know when I'm coming homes." That it'll only be a few minutes, I'll be right back. But thank you, because without you, this could not have happened. Thank you so much. Jen read the list of board members whom I served with over all these years. And they were a wonderful assemblage of talent. But it is so meaningful to me to have two board members tonight who, in my mind, were emblematic of just incredible excellence in lengthy board service. So Wendy Gardner and Eve Rice, thank you so much for coming tonight. It's really meaningful to me. Thank you. To all my board colleagues, past and, of course, present. To all the superintendents with whom I've served, my beloved Jen and others. To the principals, Evan Powderly. Kim, so proud of you. Bill Donahue, who was a principal, people may forget, and others. The assistant principals, all the athletic coaches who strive so hard to bring excellence to their students. And the Byram Hills athletes themselves, who have given me so much joy over the years watching you compete, win or lose, it's always been just a thrill for me. And I'll still be at the sideline somewhere along the way rooting you on. I do love this district. The education, the athletics, the fine arts, the music, the drama, the science research, everything about it, to me, is what makes not only this school district, but this country, great, because it's public education. That is the backbone of this country. And it's your support as parents of public education that makes this happen. So please continue to support Byram Hills. I'm not, I'm going to be a board member emeritus in a few weeks, so I'm going to say it now. When the budget comes up, please continue to vote the right way. Because we need your support to continue delivering the excellent education that your students have had, will have, and those that will follow. This really is emotional, so I think I'll stop. When I leave the meeting tonight and I get in my car, I'll say, where did it all, how did it all go so fast? How could 22 and a half, 23 years just go by like that? But it does, and I will happily make way for my successor. I only wish tonight, I only wish tonight that my two brothers could have been here for this. I know they're watching from above, but I really wish they could have been here. They would have given it to me to no end. But I wish they could have been here. Please continue to support us. I look forward to my next role as Town Justice of the town of North Castle. Fair warding, obey the speed limits. But thank you so much for this honor. I hope I'm worthy of it. In your eyes, that I am makes me feel all the better. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Just one more thing to mention before we definitely take a break. And your shoes are not going to be easy to fill. But just to, for the, for the benefit of the community, I want them to understand the process, given that, you know, as of January 1st, Ira will, you know, no longer be on the board. So between now and January, of course, he will. So at, the board has three options in terms of how to proceed. One is to appoint a successor. That appointment would only last until the next election, which is in May. It wouldn't be for Ira's entire term, because it would be an appointment, not, not an election. The second option is to, you know, leave the seat vacant until the May election, given that, you know, May is not that far away. The third option is to do a special election. The special election actually has to be, has to follow the same cadence that a regular election does, so it's actually quite lengthy in terms of notice periods. There's a cost involved. There's adults in the building, so that there are a bunch of issues around a special election, but that would likely not happen for, you know, for many months, probably until March or, or late, late March, mid to late March, just in terms of the way the timeline works. That decision about how to proceed, you know, what I would propose to my fellow board members would not be made tonight, given that the seat isn't even vacant yet, but rather at the January board meeting. We'd have a public discussion on those three options. Obviously, if there's any members of the community that have a view, they, they are welcome to share it. And then we would, you know, we would, at that point, you know, move forward with, you know, with one of the plans in terms of how to, how to fill a seat. But just ask if any other board members have questions. But that's, that's generally what happens when a board seat becomes vacant mid, you know, mid, midterm. All right? With that, I will take a couple of minutes of recess, just to allow anyone who needs to go home, go home, but thank you for coming tonight. You made our night.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay if you want. So we are going to skip to 16, to comments from the public at this point. We actually have a very full agenda tonight. There's a lot more to do, but I'm also mindful we don't want you to have to sit here and wait. I, just a few things before we start, which are the usual things around just not mentioning any, you know, personnel or students by name, that we will be listening to everything you have to say, but it's not a two-way dialogue. The, we're going to try to keep this public comment meeting to, section to 20 minutes, because we also have principals waiting here to present, and their school early tomorrow. But to the extent that we run over and there are more public comments, we can do that after the rest of the business is conducted. So, you know, we'll, we'll stay if you have more than, than that. And that each person just respect, you know, the three minutes. So with that, I invite anybody who'd like to come up. It's hard for me to see you from here, so if you just want to stand up and, and you can come to the microphone and just state your, your name, and, and we can, we can begin.
Hello? Okay, is this too loud?
That's perfect.
Okay. Tonight is about community and parents coming together who want-
Am I just saying your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Nicole Viola. Nicole Viola? Sorry, I'll move it down.
No problem.
Okay. Tonight is about community and parents coming together who want what is best for their children, whether they are in this room or watching from their home. It has nothing to do with anti-mask, pro-mask, anti-vaccine, pro-vaccine, religion, race, or politics. We all want his best, we all want what is best for our, our children. And we all live in this community because we know it's a wonderful place to raise our children. It still can be, but we need to take a step back, look at the bigger picture, and work together. We should all be concerned that our right to make our own decisions is being taken away. Whether you agree with my decision or not, the right to make our own decision is what grants us our freedom. Ask yourself, is this the type of world you want your children or grandchildren to live in, where they are forced to do something they don't believe in? And if they don't, they aren't allowed in public places. Whether you agree with this decision or not, we need to be able to have the freedom to choose. I know what you're thinking. Well, this is different. It's for a greater good, and we all have to do our part. Whether you see it or not, this is not about the virus. We know people who are vaccinated can still get it, still transmit it, and are risking side effects. These are facts. But I'm not here to change your mind or tell you information you would rather not hear. I'm here to tell you that your beliefs are valid and my beliefs are valid. We are all doing what we feel is best for our family. I wouldn't make a decision that I thought would harm my own children, just like I know you wouldn't. Our life experiences and circumstances are all different, and it shapes who we are and what decisions we make. There are reasons behind where you stand and where I stand, and that's okay. It's a part of life. None of us want to be here speaking out. It's not like we woke up one day and said, hey, let me put myself in an uncomfortable situation where I'm singled out in my community. This is not easy. What's easy is going with the flow and being non-confrontational. But guess what? We did wake up. We felt something wasn't right. We felt like we no longer had control. We felt like our decisions for our families were being taken away, and we felt like things just weren't adding up. My mother always told me, Nicole, go with your gut, and that's what I'm doing. For everyone listening, if something in your gut is telling you maybe something isn't right, then dig a little deeper. Do some research, ask some questions, reach out to us. It's okay if you are suddenly questioning what's going on. There's no shame or judgment with changing how you feel. Again, I'm not here to throw facts at you, or I'm encouraging you to look at the facts with an open heart and mind and ask yourself how you feel about this and how this will affect generations to come. The silver lining in all of this is we get a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to change the course of history and show our children how following your beliefs isn't always easy. We can teach them how even though we may not agree with someone, we can still accept and support them. Whether you join us or not, we will continue to fight for your freedom and your right to make decisions for your family. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christina Capolino, and I have two sons, one at Coman Hill and one at Wampus. I've previously made my opposition known in regards to the mask mandates for children in school. I believe that it is a parent's right to choose what is best for their children, especially when there is a risk involved. Tonight, I wanted to briefly discuss a few scary ideologies that have become the common sense thinking of 2021. Somehow, destroying livelihoods is the way to save lives. Somehow, destroying humanity and pitting us against each other is the way to protect us, the people. Somehow, destroying immune systems is the way to introduce health. Somehow, following the science means censoring doctors and anyone that goes against the chosen narrative. And somehow, you must give up some freedom in order to get more freedom. I think that when the pandemic started, we all hoped that what was promised would happen, that safe vaccines would come and we would all finally go back to normal. Now, we are seeing that countries with the highest vaccination rates still have surging cases of COVID. And yet somehow, the answer from those in power is more vaccine mandates. I think we all know the definition of insanity. I have had to remind myself, and I would like to remind everyone listening tonight, that we are born free and that our government has greatly faltered at its sworn duty to uphold our American liberties. On a side note, this is the third board meeting that I've attended this year. At that first board meeting, the night before our school year started, I learned that the format for these board meetings is not a back-and-forth, but rather attendees can make their comments and be heard. Now, I know many of us have had numerous conversations with Jen Lamia, as superintendent of our district. But a few weeks ago, when some parents reached out to Scott Levy requesting a meeting with the board where we could have that opportunity for a discussion, a back-and-forth, I was extremely disappointed at how quickly we got turned down. I found it surprisingly weak that this Board of Ed would turn down members of our school community at such a fragile moment in our history. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name's Stetiana. I have one child in Coman Hill and one entering next year. I just have a few thoughts to share. But if you only take away one thing, let the takeaway be that, as kind of said prior to me, we should all collaborate to preserve your right to make choices for your children, and I should preserve rights to make choices for mine. I'm a psychology geek, so just like, bear with me for a second. So according to Simply Psychology, cognitive dissonance refers to a situation involving conflicting attitudes, beliefs, or behaviors. This produces a feeling of mental discomfort, leading to an alteration in one of the attitudes, beliefs, or behaviors to reduce the discomfort and restore balance. You would have learned about this in an Intro to Psych course. I bring it up today because we all exhibit cognitive dissonance when we perhaps ignore facets of information that conflict with knowledge we have in our beliefs in order to prevent, like, some level of internal crisis. This could be partially why people act in contrary to their values during conflict and maybe convince themselves that what's happening is justified, or why people were able to be bystanders to atrocities in history. So I just bring your awareness to this internal process in the psyche with the hopes that we can take a non-defensive listening stance, keep an open mind, and understand that hearing a perspective different than ours doesn't render our perspective incorrect. Rather, there are likely truths on all sides. At this point, we have well-established data that explains that the protective elements of the COVID-19 shot are protective for the individual and not in the way of preventing transmission. This means that we also know that being socially responsible is separate and apart from any choices around the vaccine. And therefore, we can make choices for our children that are specific to them as individuals and not necessarily about how it impacts others. Today, parents are faced with very complex and difficult decisions. Luckily, as parents, we have innate instinct and innate intimate knowledge of our children that typically help us to make the toughest of choices. I don't think you should parent like me. I think you should parent like you. And that right can only be protected by legislation that protects parental choice. For those of, for those of us that have multiple children, we may make a medical or educational decision for one child that needs to be different for their sibling. Again, we know our children most intimately, and we know what's best for them. Parents are the stakeholders in the difficult decisions about their kids. We cannot take the old adage of "it takes a village" to mean that the village gets to override the parent and decide what's best for a child. But rather that the village is there to support the parent, they're there to empower the parent. I have almost never seen a one-size-fits-all model be appropriate for anything when it comes to kids. And it certainly is not appropriate when it comes to medical decisions. In fact, one-size-fits-all models truly undermine just how complex these decisions are. It's hard enough to make the most choices for your child without ever getting confirmation that it was the right choice. However, it can be truly traumatic, and again, as a psychologist, I never use that word lightly. It can be truly traumatic if you're a parent and make a forced choice for your child, only to regret it later for some reason, and ultimately feel you weren't the advocate for your child you hoped to be. So please, let's advocate for pro-parental choice legislation as we try to see our way out of this pandemic. And specifically, I encourage you to join us in opposing some of the following proposed bills, like A8378, 8416. More are listed on Westchester United website. And please join us in vocalizing support for bills like S4376. Again, others listed on Westchester United. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Gordon. And thanks for your time tonight. We all see the divide happening in our country over differing worldviews. We found ourselves in different camps over many, many issues, and it's gotten more difficult to hear and respect the other side. Clearly, this is harmful and sad on so many levels. Our freedom to make personal decisions and live our lives in the way each of us believes is most beneficial to our families is the key to keeping the peace in our schools and our communities. Mandates are the antithesis of this freedom. While many of us here do not feel it necessary to vaccinate our children for COVID-19, we respect families who feel differently. If you believe the vaccine will keep your child safe, you should, by all means, have that choice. We may see it differently, and yes, we do, we have done a lot of research. And we need the ability to protect our children as well. There is also no hypocrisy, hypocrisy in being pro-vaccine and anti-mandate. Overreach by the government may fall in your favor today, but in the future, that could be very different. On a personal note, the divide in opinion over vaccines is very close to home. In fact, it is in my home. And I highly doubt I'm alone in this. You see, my husband feels differently about the way the rollout has happened for the vaccine. He is generally okay with just about anyone being vaccinated. He isn't worried about possible dangerous side, adverse side effects, and seems to trust the safe and effective mantra. He also is not particularly concerned that anyone in my family is in immediate danger without having the injection, as we are all, thanks be to God, in good health. And three of, the five of us have already had COVID. I, on the other hand, am dead set against having our minor child vaccinated with an experimental drug, which has been proven to cause myocarditis in young men, along with a slew of other possible side effects, and has no long-term safety data for a disease that has 99.99% cure rate for kids. And that's if they get COVID to begin with. Because my husband respects my strong opinion about the matter, and just as importantly, he wants to keep the peace, he has agreed that we could hold off on the vaccine for now. I share this with you to reinforce the "keep the peace" message. Having a choice in the matter is the only thing getting us through this difficult time. If a vaccine mandate comes through, it has the potential to devastate my family. How do I comply with something I feel is morally, ethically, and scientifically devoid of good? How do I subject my child to an unproven and ineffective, ineffective and risky drug? For me, the choice would mean homeschool, which would be incredibly unfair to my child, or moving out of state. My husband would absolutely oppose to both of these options. Where does this leave us? No choice would equal no peace in my family. No choice would equal no peace in our community or our country. We must have a choice. Please stand up to these mandates, regardless of your opinion on vaccinations. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Will Hoffman, live on High Street, and thank you for hearing us tonight. Here we are, three months on. Kids are still wearing masks. There's no protocols for the measurement of when masks can, you know, be removed. And there's no understanding of when this is going to end. You know, the DOH, the board, frankly, have been unresponsive to parents' evidence that we've provided. Like, we can only conclude masks in New York are going to be permanent, and we all need to reconsider if life is acceptable under these conditions in a state turning its back on democracy. We, you know, we as the Westchester United parent, Armonk Parents for Choice, we have multiple names now. Masks present, we, we came up with a mask presentation, 34 slides. We provided it to Jen. I've sent it to everyone here on the board for your information. We've met with Senator Shelley Mayer, and thank you, Jen, for helping us meet with the head of the DOE, Dr. Rosa, and the head of the Board of Regents, Dr. Young. We, you know, I thought we presented some good information to them. We presented in this mask presentation that we have much higher case rates. There are much higher case rates in states with mask mandates versus no mandates, from what we've seen. European countries have higher case rates that have mask mandates versus no mask mandates. We've demonstrated psychological and physical negative impacts on children. We have studies that show all kinds of pathogens in these masks that are, you know, being worn, you know, later in the day. And, you know, basically, also fibers come off the mask and mold ends up in all, all our lungs. So, I mean, this impacts you just as much as the kids, because you guys are wearing masks all the time. So, you know, educationally, negative impacts, studies, peer-reviewed studies have proven that. So, you know, basically, schools with mask mandates now are actually in an inferior learning environment than schools without mask mandates. That seems to be getting proven at this point. And masks are recently realized are, masks have been ruled unconstitutional in Pennsylvania. Most states don't have mask mandates anymore. You know, so we've demonstrated harm to our kids, you know, right now, immediately, from these continued mask mandates. We're at about maybe 2,000 hours between last year and this year for our kids. I don't know what the long-term impacts are going to be in my six-year-old, but I can't imagine they're going to be good. So, you know, really, I just want to conclude that, you know, we've asked you to meet with us, we've asked you to come off your ivory towers and talk to us on this and engage us, and we're just going to ask that again. We think the science that masks should be worn is wrong, and we would like to challenge the doctors that are advising you on that. You know, I just want to conclude that, you know, let's, I, I heard earlier that, you know, we were- were encouraging kids to use logic, question norms, think deeper. I'm asking the same of you all on masks and vaccines. You know, let's just, I'll just conclude with, you know, look at the side of the box on these masks. Will not provide any protection against COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm just going to ask that we pause here at this point because we just have so much to do business-wise and some principles waiting that we want to do that, and then we'll come back to public comment if you want to speak.
I didn't prepare anything. I just wanted to say a few words, and I'll be done. I'll be a lot shorter than everyone else, if that's okay with you.
If it takes, if you could do it in a minute.
Yeah, it's going to be quick. It's not, I have no, nothing to read from.
Okay, and then we're going to take a break. But again, if you have comments, then by all means, you can stay.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
But why don't you speak, and then we're going to transition.
So first of all, I'd like to say hello to everyone here today. My name is Dwayne Rivera. I have two sons in high school, both of which on the tennis team. And so I'm really happy that they chose that sport, because otherwise, they'd be wearing a mask playing another sport. It's one of the things. Didn't mean to make everybody laugh, but that's just the reality of it. I think that, you know, I think you guys are taking orders from, you know, above, like, you know, the governor and so on and so forth. And I know you're probably limited to some of the things that you guys can do. I understand that to a certain extent, but I really would like to ask you to, when these orders come from up, from the governor, to push back, you know, because I know you guys don't appreciate wearing the mask as well. And then I asked my son if he's had interactions with other kids in his school. Really, they have to stay away from the other kids, you know. So I know you guys want to do the same thing for yourselves, because you have to be here eight hours a day. And I'd like to have my son have a, you know, normal senior year. So that's it.
So just to take two minutes, just to go through, because I think that, just want to make sure everybody has, you know, full information on masking and on the vaccine clinic, because we did get, you know, obviously, a good number of inquiries and tried to respond to all of them. But I want to make sure everybody has the information. So let me just run down that, then we're going to go to our next item of business. And again, if anybody has more public comments, then we can come back to it at the end. But as you all know, New York State mandate's still in place for masks. We agree that we think it would be very reasonable for the state to articulate a path, a set of metrics, a set of milestones where the mask mandate will be lifted. And at this point, you know, we've been active on that front with some of you in terms of Superintendent Lamia using her political capital to get audiences with the Department of Education, with local legislatures, with the Board of Regents. I know she's met, as well as with the governor's office. We've definitely sent the message that, you know, having metrics from the state, having a path, is incredibly important, and that, you know, at this point, we're far into the pandemic, and it's the right time to do that. We don't have any answers yet. If we did, we would obviously share them with you, but we'll continue to push. And we continue to work also with the Regional School Boards Association, Superintendents Association, because as you can imagine, this is a question that every district has. There still is obviously an impact of masking with quarantines. We'd have many more quarantines if we didn't have masks, but that's, we'll see what happens with that in the coming weeks. All we can say is that, you know, we continue to keep the dialogue going with everybody that has influence in the governor's office and in the Department of Health, which is where the decision will, you know, will get made in terms of what next. On the vaccine clinics, just some important clarifying information, because we understand there were a full range of feelings about vaccine clinics, and we're sensitive to that, and we respect that. A few things. First off, public schools do routinely get used by the county for health services. It's happened for many years and throughout the state and the country. The Department of Health requested this, and they really did have an inability to provide vaccines based on the demand in a reasonable period of time, different for the five-to-11-year-olds than the other age categories, because there were fewer places that were administering it. I know we had some correspondences that had made mention of the availability in certain places. Understand that, but at a macro level in our area, there was not enough availability. And I think ultimately, that came through when we got, you know, well over 400, it was like 436 kids in our community whose parents did want them to get vaccinated and did want the service to happen here, because they were having trouble finding a place to go, again, in a timely manner. Participation was completely optional, completely the parent's choice, no requirement from the district. We did not track kids getting vaccinated and not getting vaccinated. We do not have data that we've swapped with the Department of Health. They hosted it, and they administered the vaccines. Any Byram Hills person on premises was there as a volunteer, and there weren't, you know, very many of them, but there were some, because it was our gym. It was originally going to be at the district office. That was our goal. But because there were so many people that wanted the vaccinations, that precipitated the move to the high school, because they needed a space that was large enough to do it safely and to socially distance and to have, you know, to accommodate the flow. And it was after-school hours. We've instructed our faculty not to have discussions about vaccines with kids. We understand that there are concerns. Well, I understand, but we, okay. All right. So all I can tell you is that we have done everything in our power to make sure those conversations don't happen. There are issues, I think, on both sides with parents of kids who are not vaccinated, concerned that they're getting comments, and vice versa with those that are vaccinated, hearing things from kids that are unvaccinated. We can't control everything every student says, but we certainly can do our part to make sure that we are a warm and nurturing environment for every student. And as I mentioned in some correspondences, any issues that arise, please do reach out to the buildings and to let them know they're there to help, they're there to navigate this and to try to make your kids as comfortable as possible. That is our goal. So that is all I have, unless you have anything to add. Did you think I covered everything? Anything else you could make up?
No, nothing else. As I've said before, this conversation's about operations I'm happy to have with parents and I've continued to have with parents. Thank you for recognizing that school board meetings are to cover school board business and that you do have a very responsive board who is in communication constantly with legislators and everyone in the county about these issues, sitting and, you know, listening to all of you and understanding what's behind all of the feelings that you have about mask-wearing for your children, even mask-wearing for your superintendent, who doesn't want to be wearing a mask every day. These realities are real, right? These are things that trouble you and plague you as parents as you watch your kids grow up in a very different environment than you did. Our stand, you know, and I want to thank the gentleman who got up to speak, who recognized the fact that we are following mandates, we are a public school, and who was asking for the school district really to just listen, and when there comes a time where we can ask for metrics and ask for reasons why we're doing the things that we do that we do. And I just want to tell you, I think that every parent out there has trusted me as your superintendent, that I have done that, and I will continue to do that. And I have done that and continue to do that with board authority. So this is not a board that is not sitting and listening to you. That is actually my job. So know that behind me is a Board of Education that is permitting that. These are my bosses. They are saying, Jen, do what you can to make sure apparent voices are heard. Meet with the senator, meet with New York State Education Department. This Board of Education never met with the New York State Education Department Commissioner. This is something that you were able to do with me, because the board gives me authority to do that. So I get the people being upset about the state that your children are in right now. The Board of Education is not doing that to your children. This is what's coming to us from people who are holding us as a public institution, which we are. That doesn't mean that we can't listen to you, as I've done very respectfully, and cared about what you're talking about, and bring that forward so that people can hear you. I don't want you to misinterpret the fact that the board will not sit at a Q and A with you with a board that does not care. It is because this board cares that I was able to take you to the Commissioner of Education. Their role is here as a board. Their role is not to do operations. I've said it before, but that's for me. And I encourage you, if you have more to talk about, to do that with me. And know that when you do that with me, it is with a board's authority that you do that. And that means that they support your right as parents to have feelings about what decisions are made about your children. Okay? Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you. So why don't we move to the curriculum conversation, and that's item 9.1.
Do you want to wait a second, in case people want?
Yeah, well, we can wait a minute, too, just to let anybody who wants to leave, leave. But again, you're welcome to stay.
I want to, for the record, before we start our conversation with the principals, for anybody who's going to be watching this at home and the comments that I made to our school community, we do care very deeply about a parent's perspective about raising their children. And that is why we're a community that I believe in, that a board member has been on the board for 23 years for, and why I'm continuing to be the superintendent during a time when no one should really want this job. But it is faith in our school community and listening to parent voices and knowing what we know as members of a school community and a board of education that make that happen. So I do want to thank the parents for trusting us and for coming out and sharing that, what their fears are about any kind of government control over their children. I can appreciate that. So tonight, we are going to shift gears. We're shifting gears again. We've had quite a bit, quite a bit of activity at tonight's meeting, and I want to thank you, if you still have any energy left in you. We have our middle school principal, Kim Lappel, here tonight. Our high school principal, Chris Walsh. Our chairperson for guidance, six through 12, Christina Wilson. And tonight, Tim is going to lead us in a discussion. We have had the opportunity to speak with all three of you prior to us changing schedules at the middle school and the high school. I do want to say that it is hard enough in this world for people to continue with status quo during a pandemic. It is hard enough for people to do that. And you looked at children, you looked at teaching and learning, and you said, "We still need to make these changes for kids. We need to listen to what kids need and what teachers need. We need to follow what's important for students to be able to go deeply into content in their areas." And you didn't let a pandemic stop you from doing that. Christina, you were left with some hurdles. You had a grand plan for all these college visitations and all these connections, and you didn't let that stop you either, right? You still were able to make inroads in a lot of places we haven't and to learn some new information for us, moving forward for our kids. And I would say, at the hands of the three of you in particular, we're thriving. So thank you for not giving up on moving forward in a time when most people couldn't maintain the status quo, right? So I appreciate that, and I know that it is not always easy to do this work and to really think of these demands in a community like this, right? It's like we're demanding excellence at every turn, and you've never disappointed. So thank you, because I know that a lot of that time has come from your own families. You're combined to eight children between you, most of those in the basketball team at the Walsh House, and your partners, right? And we know that you've been so dedicated to doing this work, and every single one of these kids is better for it. We'll continue to learn. We go down lanes, and we decide what needs to be changed, and we come back out and we make changes. So you are doing something that a lot of people wouldn't do, they wouldn't have the confidence to do, which is to make a big change, to get a whole group of people behind that change, and then maybe to tweak that change and recognize when sometimes things don't work. So that's what we love about the work that you're doing, that you will take those risks, and you're modeling what we ask kids to do every day. So that's just my plug, and thanks for sticking with us through this pandemic, because you have not had an easy job, and I appreciate that. Tim is going to lead our discussion tonight. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Am I on? Okay. Can't tell. So thanks for joining us.
Your mic's not working.
For tonight, you can hear that? Okay.
Just put your lips right up.
That's what I feel like I have to do. It's all right. Oh, thank you, Kelly. Yeah, move the microphone, not me. So what we're going to talk about tonight is we'll review the reasons why we made these shifts in our master schedule, and we will review what those elements are in the new schedule. Then we'll talk about the benefits and the challenges and things that we're reflecting on now, and how we plan to evaluate the changes in the master schedule. So we have some information to present, but I ask the board to, at any point throughout the presentation, to just chime in at each segment with any questions you have. This is meant to be a discussion, although we do have some information we do want to present at the same time. And talking about the schedule, this did not happen overnight. This was many years of working on our curriculum and instructional shifts, and also, at the same time, having, engaging our community in several studies. We read some books together as a community. We read Frank Bruni's book about colleges. We read Mark Brackett's book about the, sort of the entanglement of academic rigor and emotional wellness. And through that study and looking at our mission and our goals as a district, we're making these shifts in our schedule, because we feel it's better for student learning in the long run to produce the graduates we want for the 21st century. So that's, it's been a long journey. There's been lots of input from parents, from community members, from students, faculty and administrators in making these shifts. So I wanted to just give that background. And this quote was something Chris presented early on to his faculty, that "The school's master schedule is like looking at an MRI of the inner workings of a school. It is the window to the soul of the school." And recently, I've been looking, I read this quote from Winston Churchill that says, "We make our buildings, and then they make us. They regulate the course of our lives." And talking about how architecture influences the way we move, and I like to think of that about the master schedule as well. When you have 45-minute periods, or you have eight periods a day, that's going to influence how we behave. So we've started to look at the way we were behaving and the way our instructional models were in the classroom, and we needed to, we recognize that we need to build different buildings. We need to change the architecture in order to produce the flow that we want in the learning. So those, that's just setting a little bit of the impetus to some of the changes. We've also been having some partner organizations that we've been working with that have also given us some new insight in looking at a lot of the research around student learning. And you heard us talk about challenge success at a Stanford University and their model, and we've been working with them for three or four years now, maybe longer. And we've surveyed our student community and our parent community twice so far and plan to do it a third time. We've had a long time, about a decade-long relationship with the University of Michigan Depression Center, and also the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, to just name a few of the partner organizations that have helped us in our thinking. And then finally, really, having conversations together as an administrative team and a faculty about what rigor really means, and trying to get off the old model of rigor, probably like when you went to school and when I went to school, that it was onerous and lots of work, and the hardest teachers were the teachers that gave us the most work, the most homework, and gave us the hardest tests. But looking at a new model of what rigor means is looking at how cognitively engaged are students? How excited are they about the curriculum? Are they following their passions? That you can have engagement that engages students in complex work. So not really more being the onerous work, but really looking at the work being thoughtful and highly engaging and complex, and that is what rigor is to us. So I wanted to give that introduction as to some of the impetus to it. And then also, just mention one more thing as a word of caution, as we're evaluating it. First of all, we've only been three months into our new schedules for one, and we've also been in these new schedules during a pandemic, and knowing what students have come off of. So we have to sort of look at it through that lens when we're looking at our data and feedback and be patient with some of the changes we're making and the way we're interpreting some of the input that it could be multifaceted. And we just want to acknowledge that going into looking at the information that's driving our reflection on these schedules. So with that, what we'll do is jump into just a reminder about what has changed in the schedules, and I'll ask Kim to go first and just, Kim, if you can walk through the main points of what's shifted in the middle school schedule.
I'd be happy to. When we look at the HCC schedule, the most distinct changes surround some of the wellness aspects that we've added. Each day, our students begin with something we called X-Pod. I know that the board is quite familiar with it. But just as a reminder, it's our morning wellness. It's an opportunity to build community. An example of building community would be that their students are in smaller groups. Each student is with a faculty member. Each faculty member and the students are connected to a grade-level team. So all 6A students are together, 7A, and you follow the thinking. We're also building community by doing different ways that the students can feel connected. There are morning songs, where they listen to songs and lyrics, and it's a great way to throw some music into the start of a day also. It brings energy to the school, and the first X-Pod that actually identifies the lyrics in the song gets a point. And so we've developed we've developed a, a competition among the X-Pods, that in the end, after the first semester, after they've either been involved with different ways to, to gather points. And it sounds silly, but it's been a really fun way to do this, where students will not only get points for if they identify a song, it could be a movie quote. It also could be fundraising, or contributing to part of the school that we're trying to bring attention to. So, there's a, there's a code drive, and so, we bring that to our students and ask them to contribute to keep in mind how to help others. So, that's all building community. And then we also ask that we, our students start their day with some support through organizational skills and planning. Students can begin their day by emailing teachers if there's a teacher they need to be, reach out to. Recently, I saw a sixth grade, all the sixth grade X-Pods, they did a reflection. They took an aspect of a rubric about their involvement in studying, and they were to highlight where they were landing on that rubric. That was an X-Pod opportunity, where they just took one line out of a rubric, asked each student to consider how they were doing, and what they could do better, and set a little bit of a goal. So, those are the types of examples of how we are helping students organizationally feel connected with their, their, their faculty, with themselves, and with the building, and be prepared for the day. It is, X-Pod is 15, one five minutes, and it is a way to start the morning.
Kim, this is a, a good time to point out the sixth grader who won the competition for the magnet. Can I read that other one underneath? It was great. You know, just in the spirit of what you were talking about, about like developing community. So, we had a sixth grader who won the Culture of Byram Hills Design Contest, Jane Good, and she said, "My design shows a girl giving a balloon of hope to a boy. I think this is connected to Byram Hills culture, because we value kindness, respect, and inclusiveness. We even named our cafeteria after these three words, 'Perfeteria.' It's important to Byram Hills culture, because even from the first days of school, part of the crash course was to understand showing kindness toward one another. Probably one of the most valued things at HCC is being able to accept and help each other, and that is, which, I'm sorry, which is what my characters are doing in my design. In addition, I added words all around each of the people. The boy is sad and frightened. He thinks negative things about himself, which HCC dislikes. The girl, however, is surrounded by the best intentions, and her beliefs are overcoming the boy's fear and anger, showing how Byram Hills can put a stop to those bad things with hope and positive thinking." And this was the winner of that magnet, which I've given to all the administrators and the Board of Education. I just think like, this, in a nutshell, says what you're doing at HCC right now with that.
Thank you, Dr. Lom. Thank you for leaving. It is, and it's funny, my son last night saw that magnet, and I got to explain to him as well, was sitting on our refrigerator. So, student-directed learning. Our, our vision is that our students have voice and choice in a structured manner in the middle school. It's an opportunity for them to learn and grow while we can support them in their decision-making. With that in mind, we developed a, a period after lunch for seventh and eighth grade, where students, and I'm taking this from the new definition of rigor, can be challenged, engaged, enriched, and empowered. They can, they can have opportunities for extra help. They can have opportunities for student interest. We have a knitting club. We bring in a yoga instructor. Right now, we're looking to find ways to bring high school students down to share some of their talents and their interests to be role models for our students. We have small groups support, such as academic intervention services. We allow intramurals for students to also, if they need to get out and be engaged and run and be physically active, their opportunities are there. And we also give wellness opportunities, whether they're working with their counselors, meeting with their counselors individually. The counseling department will be starting affinity groups, which will also give students an opportunity to connect. And there's also time during that, during SDL, for students, if they receive resource room, or they get services. Instead of missing out in an opportunity, such as in the past, it might have been music, or it might have been another opportunity, academic opportunity, it's during student-directed learning. So, it's time that they have devoted to them, that they can make the best choices. There are times that students will be asked to come in. They might need some support, and they might not want to receive that support, so we encourage it by telling them that they are going to get the support and work with a teacher. And it might be because they're missing homework. It might be because we, there needs to be a focus on a, a particular skill for a, a week or so. But we have a system that we received help from through the tech department, Dr. Taylor, that really allows this to happen in a scheduling sense, because it's quite complex. Finally, just the last three big pieces. We have longer blocks of instructional time for our students. That's in world language. It's in our academics. It's in music. We have fewer classes and transitions per day. So, students will see, as compared to schedules of the past, they will see fewer classes a day for a longer period of time, so that reduces the transitions and allows our students to engage in their work. And what we are, we had fidelity to was flexibility for the team time. So, every grade-level team still has control of their time and how they would like to use it. They, it is blocked, but if they wanted to divide it or, or see students differently, they have that opportunity to do that, to make sure that students receive the support that they need.
So, those are highlights to what's changed in the middle school, and we'll come back and talk about the benefits and challenges that Kim is noticing and feedback she's getting. Let's have Chris highlight what's different about his schedule this year, as a reminder to, to us, for those who don't have kids at the high school. I think most of you do at this point.
Hi, Rick.
Hi, Rick.
So, thanks. And Jen, I just wanted to reflect your comments to the board. I really appreciate, as the principal, you giving us the ability to actually even look at a schedule. By all, you know, external measures, we were doing really good with the old, old schedule. And we saw an opportunity where we could do better. We could align a little bit more closely with our community's values, but still really reach those, those marks where our community expects to reach. So, I do appreciate you giving us the ability to do that. So, in this schedule, we really do think that overall, it aligns much more closely with our values and our ability to eventually live our mission. And so, it really, the highlights are changing from a 49-minute period to a 64-minute period. And that allows us, because of the shifts in the amount of time that those classes meet, and the length of those classes, for us to really highlight depth rather than breadth. And so, having the longer periods actually makes it much more student-centered schedule. And it really allows us and our teachers to design their lessons around maximizing those 64 minutes, to optimize the student learning and the student outcomes. The schedule also has implemented office hours, and for the longest time, we would hear that students were either swamped after school, or they were always tired coming into school, that they never had the ability to manage all of the things that, that were coming their way. And one of the most impactful things that Challenge Success did, when we had John Kleiman in, he had a couple of our students demonstrate just how much they're required to do. They have their academics, all of their different content areas. They have their extracurriculars. They have their tutors. They have their service organizations that they're part of. And all of those things are things that drag down our students' time, and impede their ability to actually get a good night's rest. So, office hours actually allows the kids to have much more focused work with the teachers during the school day. It is also a way for students who don't feel that they need to use office hours to get a little extra rest, without us actually changing, or the board changing the, the start times. Fewer classes a day, because we went from a model where we were meeting seven classes a day, and now we're meeting five. That leads to less homework, the ability for students to actually manage their course, course load, and to be able to prepare much easier, much more easy than they did before. We have fewer transitions per day. In the old model, with our A-Day, we were transitioning kids moving throughout the building as much as a half hour throughout the day. Now, we've cut that in half, because we have less transitions. So, the time that we spent, kids moving them on the hamster wheel, we've taken that, and we've put it back into instructional time. The longer lunch period, and we spoke about this for a really long time, 26 minutes or 25 in the A-Day schedule, really sent the message to our kids that that part of their day was not something that we really valued. What we really valued was them eating as quick as possible, and then getting back in to, to a class. So, shifting that and actually acknowledging that they should be treated like humans, and be able to sit down and have conversations, even work on things that they might want to get ready for, a little extra time to prepare for an exam, and to actually digest the meal, were all important in us shifting to the longer lunch period. It is also a universal lunch period for the first time since I've been here, going back to 30 years. And that was important when we were doing our stakeholder meetings, because people felt like we were missing an opportunity to come together and build as a community. So many of our students had friends who had the other lunch period, and we heard time and time again, if they could only have a few minutes with their friend at lunch, it would make their day much more steady and much more manageable. With that universal lunch period, we've actually know, we, we have an opportunity for people like who I would have been back when I was a freshman, who need to just run around and get some of that energy out. We've implemented intramurals during the lunch period, and every day, we have between 75 and 100 kids participating in that. So, those were the big shifts of the schedule.
Great. And we'll talk about some of the benefits. I'm going to go over to Chris first, and you mentioned a few of these items on this list, but I want to remind the board that it, when Chris was studying this, Chris did something where he called it shadowing, and he asked teachers to shadow students, and Chris did it himself, to see what it was like to live that old schedule. So, Chris, thinking about, you haven't, I don't know if you've shadowed anyone in the new schedule yet, but you, I'm sure you have a sense of what the schedule's like. You've lived it for many years here as a teacher, and as an assistant principal, and now principal. What's your sense of just the feeling of the building? Do you notice anything different as you go from the morning to lunch period throughout the day? If you were to think about shadowing a kid again, what do you think would be different?
Yeah, I asked that question today. I was meeting with a group of students, and their feedback was that they're a lot less exhausted at the end of the day. In the old schedule, the kids used to say, they used the term, that they're, it felt like they were white-knuckled, where they were sort of clenching their fists all day because of the amount of things that they had to do, and they never really experienced a time to just exhale. With this schedule, it really does seem like the, the pressure of the school is at a place that was, it's much less than what it was. Kids are coming in for office hours. They're still a little bit of a mad rush, but they come in for office hours, and it's not all at once coming in, rushing to classes. During those passing times, kids are able to get to class, and it doesn't feel like they need to run to the bathrooms or run down to the cafeteria to get back to the, their, their class. So, we do have a, a number of teachers who are going to be shadowing in the next couple of months. We wanted to make sure that we had a, a good idea of COVID protocols, and making sure that, that our shadowing was as safe as possible. But already, you can, you can feel that the, sort of the temperature of the, the day has gotten to a much more manageable level.
Are the students able to manage their time better? Is time management, are they learning how to manage their time better? And my follow-up to that is going to probably be the guidance eventually, is this helping them transition eventually to college, where they don't have other classes on one day?
Yeah, that's a, a great question. And one of the challenges that Tim will get to in one of the slides, is us trying to differentiate between it being an issue with the new schedule, or it being a COVID issue, either because of the protocols, or because of some of the issues that we've had over the last 21 months. So, in terms of the executive skill-building, we do know that some of our students are feeling like they are able to actually schedule out their day. We hear that they are actually scheduling homework for the next night of a class that met that day, which, in the old model, would not have been able, would not have even been on the, on the student's radar. So, now, we are seeing that teachers are assisting students with, "Don't do this tonight. Save it for tomorrow night. You want to study this tonight?" We are seeing a lot of that, and a lot of our professional development focuses around that. I think this is a good point where I can shift to Christina, because we are introducing a program for executive functioning skill-building, and I'll let her speak to that.
Sure. Thanks. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, good. So, we have an executive functioning program, which we've actually had for a few years now, three or four. We invite our ninth grade students who are struggling and have been identified by a teacher or another professional in the building, as needing some extra time to try to figure out the best organizational system that works for a student. If you all recall, organization is actually really personal. It's not a one-size-fits-all situation. And for some of our students, they just quite haven't gotten there as far as developing that organizational system. And so, these students are going to be working with Kira Hunt and Leanie Levinbrook on different strategies to kind of formulate their own, you know, organizational system. That's going to be starting in the next week, and that runs for about eight weeks. And, you know, our ninth grade students are going to be invited to that.
But we are seeing some of those things, you know, there were students who were fully remote last year, or if they were hybrid. We know that they were limited in just transporting their gear. We know that we didn't have lockers here. So, all of those things play into what we're experiencing and what they're experiencing. Over the course of the year, our professional development sort of steers towards where we think we need to address, whether it be working with the teachers to differentiate their lessons, or to develop different strategies for that instructional time, or how they can help their students with those executive skills. Those are things that we're going to be looking at throughout the year.
Yeah. I will add that we probably have, have over half of our faculty trained on various models of executive function. Just over the course of many years, we've been offering workshops on executive function. And also, you know, we've been trying to get students empowered. We talked about student empowerment, and you can't empower students without giving them the skills to be empowered, and what to do with that in terms of managing their time, and, and learning to organize, and some of the, and how to take initiative, and how to, you know, overcome obstacles. That'll, there are strategies we can implement in the classroom that helps students do that, and many of our faculty have been trained in that as well. And Christina, I'll just stick with you for a moment, and it may be part of your later presentation, but we'll just go with it now, is, you know, we talk about creating structures that regulate our behavior, as Winston Churchill said. You've talked a little bit about how that's changed some of the behavior of the guidance department in terms of the flow of the day for you with seeing students. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. You know, the schedule is, you know, from our perspective, it's much more aligned with our priorities, our social-emotional priorities, because we're not asking students to make a choice between attending class and receiving the support that they need from social workers, school psychologists, counselors, and they're not put in this bind, which was always really the case with the old schedule. Our counselors and school psychologists, our social workers, they see students before school, during office hours. They see students during lunch. It's a very busy time in guidance, and certainly after school. And then, in the cases where we really need it, of course, they can miss class, and we can have students, you know, at that time. But it's just, it's much more of an alignment to our social-emotional, you know, you know, feelings about what is good for a student in a social-emotional realm.
Great. And Kim, I'll go over to you, and sort of with the same reference, a question that I asked Chris about the feel of the building that you're noticing. You talked about many of the benefits here previously. How does the building feel overall to you compared to your many years being a Kritten on the more traditional schedule?
There's, I can't say there's a calmness in the middle school, because...
There's, I can't say there's a calmness in the middle school because middle schoolers aren't calm. But in comparison, this schedule does allow for students to sit and explore and to engage deeper in their academics. I think when you consider what we're asking our students to do, we're giving them more time to work with faculty when they're beginning to learn about different topics. So in the past, you'd have 45-minute class periods where a student would maybe learn, get introduced to the topic, and then start to engage and learn about it. The period would be over, they'd go home and do some homework, and then they'd come back the next day for a little bit more. Now what we're seeing an opportunity is that a teacher can maybe learn about the prior knowledge of what students know, can then build upon that and introduce a topic, can give some opportunities for students to learn actively, whether that be through a problem-based learning experience or a rich task, or then they can go and do some direct instruction. There could be review, and then there's also, and this has really sat with me, there's time for students to practice. So there's time that, because, and I'm going to go to some of the challenges, these blocks are long, and that's something that we're going to have to look at and work on and figure out ways to make sure that we are either supporting the teachers or the students in terms of how to make the most of these, the blocks. But there is extensive time and good time for kids to practice and then go home, and if there's something that they're doing at home, they've had the confidence, the time, the practice to work with the faculty to, whether it's to learn a technique or understand a concept with more confidence and more depth, so then when they leave the class, they've had the time to explore it and feel more, have a stronger understanding. With that comes a longer class period, which can be challenging for either the subject, the teacher, the student, and that's something that we have to consider as well.
Yeah, so we can talk-
So you have them up there.
Yep, so we can talk about the-
I can. We also built the schedule with a lot of blocks, like we wanted to honor all the subjects, so we gave music a block of time, we gave the academics a block of time, world language a block of time, and the reality is set in that that's a lot of blocks of time for students to sit through. So we developed something called a CD day. So there's AB days, and those are the longer blocks of time where you'll see two classes on, you'll see a set of classes on your A day and then another set of classes on your B day. What we've realized is that either we need, they're CD days now, and those are when we split up the classes so that they're shorter periods of time to give the students maybe an opportunity to see a class two days in a row, because there are some subjects that feel that that consistency of meeting with a student daily is important. You know, and we all think, well, give those students time to practice and give them homework or give them something. They are middle schoolers again, and that face time is important for, so that is something that we must consider. And the other trick with the AB pattern was if the student's absent. It could work out that a student is there on Monday, is absent on Wednesday, and then they maybe be in class, that would mean that there's been a lot of time because of one absence that they've missed a class. Now, we make up a lot of that time with student-directed learning, that time period, so there is contact time with the teacher, but there's just realities that we've come to realize that we have to consider. And so that's what we're moving forward with. We know that the lunches and the SDL are prized time, so we're going to consider, can we expand those two times and possibly give some relief in music, because music is long. It's good, but it's long.
Right, so there's a few areas you're looking at reviewing, looking at the CD days, the use of lunches.
Yeah, we're just going to go all the way to the end with the HCC slides, which is great. Yeah, so we, so what we started doing was, at first we had the pattern of like four ABs and then a CD. It was actually eight ABs and then a CD, and you'll say, "Kim, what does that mean?" It means that there was a lot of AB days and then a few CD days. We've come to realize that we need to sprinkle more CD days in there, and maybe what we'll do is a pattern that brings more CD days involved. And again, those CD days are just more broken times, where the team could block them, but world language then would be only 45 minutes, but they'd see them each day. So it, again, it's a little bit of a variety for the students so that they're not sitting for 90 minutes for too many periods in a row, which it's important. Our wondering also, lunches. What our schedule is tied to is lunches. We have limited space, and so I'm very envious of the high school, and I'm thinking, during this presentation, like I got to call Chris and ask him what other spaces have come alive, because that would be helpful to us. We can only have one lunch at a time, which then really limits where we, how we can space our lunches, which then limits how we can structure the schedule. So I guess the big picture of the board is, we have to take a look at our lunches and see if there's something we can do for spaces to expand the lunches and the SDL. And again, the music ensemble, it's awesome, the kids love the experience, but there is an opportunity that we can maybe pull a minute or two for music, give them some relief because they're seeing their music teachers, they're experiencing music more already. So now it's just a question of, is there a better combination that is possible so that we could maybe pull a little more time into lunch and SDL, and still, there'll still be plenty of music, which we always want to make sure our kids are involved with.
And Chris, I know you've talked about some of the challenges as you reflect on the schedule and have gotten input from faculty and students and parents. Can you highlight some of these items?
Yeah, so one of them, you know, these are just very practically, you know, with our 7:00 AM health, that's bumping up against those kids who are in there, their ability to access office hours. So we think that that's an easy one. If for us, it was a decision of whether we wanted to allow those 7:00 AM kids to actually push it a little bit later, but what we're seeing now is it's to their detriment. We are going to have to move that a little bit earlier, but we will be giving them access to office hours, and that's something that's agreed upon with the teachers. Again, we spoke about the COVID issues and trying to untangle them from the issues of the new master schedule. Yeah, the universal lunch, Kim, it's made us rethink how we use our spaces. When we had the old AB lunches, the only place in the building that the kids could be during those times were the cafeteria, Bobcat Hall, or the library. Now, and that was because there were classes going on throughout the building at that time. Teachers would get really upset if kids were in those hallways for interrupting and disturbing those classes. That's not the case right now. The teachers are also at lunch at that time, so we've really allowed it to open up the building. That being said, with COVID, we do have the cafeteria, Bobcat Hall, upper gym, the theater, the lecture hall-
The lawn.
And the library, and the patio, all be, yeah, they eat in here as well, you know. This is a very popular venue for the ninth graders.
They seek out their space, the students, right?
Yeah, yeah. So what we've really found is, and there are some students that want no part of any of those spaces, and they just want to sit with their friends in the hallway. So the kids have been able to really find their own comfort and balance with the new, with the new universal lunch.
Chris, can I just ask, from an operations point of view and managing students in that, how was that going?
Yeah, Colleen and Kristen are now over 10,000 steps every lunch period, I think. And we also have intramurals going on down in the lower gym as well. So they, we do have our aides who are working during that time, we have our hall monitors who are very active, and then Kristen and Colleen, along with our NJB security, are working really actively during that.
From an assistant principals lens, it's very busy and active and crazy, but when you're in the building, it actually has a calmness. Kids are more relaxed, they're walking slower during lunch. You know, there is a calmness, there are some issues with lines, and we're working out the food issues with kids, and those are things-
I was going to try to go the whole thing without saying the word panini.
Sorry, Chris. I know, everyone up here as a high school student, I'm sure has heard about it, so that's just the reality.
The panini issue continues to, to sort of keep our, if you're a kid and you get there late, it could be up to 25 minutes before you get through the panini line to get your sandwich. What kids have started to learn, though, is they just wait a little bit longer, they find a place to sit down, and then they go when the line is a little less.
That's what I do.
And I will say that we, students can now preorder non-panini sandwiches, and that pickup time is less than two minutes. So there are, you know, there are real issues, and then there are Byram Hills issues. The panini issue is a Byram Hills issue, but we have a lot of-
It's a good problem to have.
We have, it's a good problem to have, and we have a lot of, a lot of thoughts about how we can, you know, fix it down the line.
You can have lots of discussions about why, you know, the types of paninis kids order, and some kids just have that same panini they have to eat every day. You learn a lot about their eating habits.
That's good.
Chris, just to understand health, so was the thought to originally like do it at 7:30, but then if you did that, then it overlaps with office hours, and so then anybody that's in health can't access?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Is there any other, like, in the future, even if it's not for this year, any other option other than 7:00 AM in the schedule? Like, I mean, I wonder, like, is lunch an option? I mean, it's not ideal to take away lunch, given that we just expanded lunch, but maybe better than having people, you know, come at 7:00 AM?
Yeah, look, those are all good thoughts around it. I know that what we're doing now is they are coming in every day of the week, every day of the schedule, but it's for a less, less amount of time. It was really unrealistic for us to call it 6:30 or, you know, 6:15 health. So, yeah, thinking about that, whether we might be able to chunk it up in different ways, but we really want to make sure that we, we don't, by changing it in a certain way, place a judgment on that course, because it is such an important course for all of our sophomores. So we'll continue to look at, you know, the best way to address that, but really what we're, what's coming out of it, and I think it's a good problem, is that those office hours have a lot of value to kids.
Sure.
And we're seeing differences in it based on grade level, based on course level, day of the week, and then time in the quarter. So those are really good issues to have, and I think it's one that we'll be able to work out, so, but exploring those sorts of things for sure.
How many students are in 7:00 AM health now? I thought it had gone down.
It has gone down, you know, I think the current numbers, Christina actually, she's the one who makes the MRI, so her and-
I think we're right about 20 students.
So one cohort.
Yeah, that would be for this semester, similar.
So is it possible, maybe, since we have online technology, maybe you need to think of that?
Yeah, that's, it's a good thing to, to look at, and again, you know, looking at teacher certifications, looking at how the teachers could be involved in that.
Got it. Say no more.
But, you know, I think, I think your point is, is well-taken in that we need to look-
I just had one who went through it, and it's, it's arduous for that.
Yeah, couldn't we look at other options and different ways to deliver that? Yes.
Right, and so I just went to this wondering slide, Chris, and you're also thinking about the length of office hours and the impact of that as well on the schedule.
Yeah, so the kids have asked that, that it go from 25 minutes to 30 minutes. They feel like the 25 minutes is just a little bit under the limit of what they would need. So they've asked to take, you know, to explore whether taking the courses from 64 minutes to 63 minutes and taking those, each of those minutes and adding them to an office hours, whether that would be something that we would explore. They also did feel, though, even though we have less passing times, last year they're coming off, if you remember, 10-minute passing times that we had in place because we wanted to make sure that we could get kids through the building safely. We were having them go in one way always, so they're sort of used to living the good life with those 10 minutes. So the four minutes right now is something that they're feeling a little bit rushed, and they asked if we would consider looking at increasing that by a minute. End of the quarter again, we are, we're not set on looking at limiting the, or setting up test schedules there, but we have noticed that a lot of those overwhelming test dates have been limited because we do have less classes that are meeting. Now, there is no doubt we will have heavy weeks as we get closer to the end of the quarter, so we are trying to avoid having to stagger the end of the quarter by content area because of the limited amount of times that they're meeting. Five out of eight, where if we're staggering that, that could be a real hard time getting in all of those things.
If you think about the, like, the faculty in totality, I'm sure it's mixed in terms of emotions about the longer period, but you say, overall, teachers are liking it better or worse, or is the jury just out for a longer period of time to test it?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I think in any organization, you sort of, you have your scouts, you have your pioneers, you have your settlers, and your rock walls. And we see that sort of here. I think the really, the silver lining to having gone through last year is that teachers had to reinvent everything that they did in that, in the new schedule last year. So pivoting from that into this was much easier than it could have ever been going from our old schedule directly to this. So I will say that they, they feel like it does align with what we want to do. I think there are challenges with some of, some of them sort of converting to a new type of instruction, moving off of that maybe teacher-centered instruction to a more student-active classroom. And we're working really closely with IDE Core, who's an organization that works specifically with this. We're dedicating our faculty meeting times and our department meeting times to this work as well. Tim has been great with helping our chairs and directors get resources to teachers so that they can feel comfortable making those changes.
Yeah, I think Chris makes that point, that our teachers are much more comfortable this year experimenting with new instructional strategies because they had to last year experiment and made it safer for them, and we're seeing it across the board. It's really been great that they're trying to use some of the new strategies that they're learning through our staff developers and our consultants and through the work with their chairs and the administration, and that's been really helpful. We do want to continue to evaluate this, and Kim and Chris have been really great at getting feedback from their student advisory groups, from their faculty advisory groups. Other ways we'll look at evaluating the impact of this over time, we have implemented two surveys of challenge success at each of the middle school and high school, and we plan on doing a third administration. We haven't picked a time for that yet. Maybe we'll wait till fall of next year, so kids have lived the schedule for a year, and seeing if we notice any changes in that survey feedback. We also will look at our test data, whether it's the state test data, whether it's our advanced placement scores, looking at our course grades, looking at other benchmarking and local assessments that we have. We will look and analyze that data compared to the old schedule. I know Chris and Kim have already looked at the first quarter grades and have done an analysis, and I think your overall summary is that it's relative, it's relatively similar to the pre-COVID days. Also looking at behavioral data, looking at referrals for discipline, referrals to the school psychologist, you know, emotional wellness, that's also something, because the schedules were designed to take care of students emotionally, and looking at the overall wellness, so we'll look at other type of behavioral data. And then also continuing informal ways to get feedback from our students, our faculty and our parents on the schedule. And also considering other assessments we may want to consider, such as benchmarking. Looking at some opportunities to do some global benchmarking on student learning, similar to like the challenge success survey that's around emotional wellness. Are there other types of big surveys that collect data that we could look at over time to see the impact against some benchmarks? So that's something we're starting to have conversations about. So there's some ways we'll be formally evaluating the impact to consistently, I mean continually be monitoring the impact the schedule's having on our student learning and the outcomes. We don't want to change the outcomes, and we think it will actually increase. We don't want to lower any outcomes, we want to increase and enhance our students' learning experience, and that's been the whole goal of shifting here.
Tim, I did want to just mention, you touched on it, but really incredibly thankful for the faculty for meeting our kids where they are, and it speaks to that in the grade analysis. I know that there are a lot of, a lot of high schools where they will just draw the line and they'll say, "This is where you need to meet." And I think what our faculty, what they do better than most is they have a realistic approach with where the kids are, and they meet them there, and then their grades reflect where the kids are, not necessarily some outside measure that they need to hang on to.
And so as part of our evaluation, we'll have Christina talk about her work in the Guidance Department and give some insight. And all of this, and Christina's here as part of this conversation intentionally around the schedules, is it does impact the life of the high school kid, which impacts the Guidance Department's work. And often we think of guidance as just college counseling, but there's so much more to it. As you know, you've heard from Christina over the past two years, talk about various aspects, so we'll ask Christina to come in and talk about the aspects of the work of the Guidance Department, which really covers these three distinct areas. And so we'll segue to Christina, and again, the board, feel free to jump in at any point as she talks about these various aspects of the Guidance Department's work.
Great, so, thank you, and great visual up there. When I think about guidance and school counseling, we really think about our work in one of these three different domains. Are we working with students to advise- Are we working with students to advise them academically, um, based on their strengths and their interests, so that they're taking courses that are aligned with those interests and possible passions for the future? And, um, we're preparing students for life after college, or life after high school, whatever that might be, uh, whether it's a career, whether it's college, um, work, what, what have you. So our, our work falls in that category. And of course, inter, interwoven, I guess, at, along the way is the social-emotional piece, which is ever-present in our work. Um, I think about, and when I'm hearing Kim speak about, um, HCC and the work that's being done there, it seems a lot more intentional. We can really point to different places in the curriculum and in the, in the structure of the day where we see students receiving, uh, social-emotional support. In the high school, it's more embedded in the classroom, and, um, one of the things that we're doing this year, which we did last year at HCC, is we're doing a gap analysis of our social-emotional learning. Where is social-emotional learning taking place? Um, are there opportunities for us to shift where things are happening so that it's more aligned with students and their developmental needs? And, uh, we've done that at HCC last year, and we're in the middle of our gap analysis with, um, SEL at the high school this year. So, uh, more to report on that, uh, for you next year. But, um, yeah, I think the one thing that I would like to say about the guidance department is that the needs of our students are, are changing. And we cannot predict what they're going to be, but it is our responsibility, and I think we have a great team that's constantly assessing the needs of our students and making shifts in real time to, um, to meet their needs. I think case in point is that our students need to, we need to meet students where, where they are at. Just because it sounds like a good time to start talking about college or start talking about academic, uh, course placement, doesn't mean that a student is ready for that conversation. So we need to make ourselves available over a longer period of time, multiple times for some students, for those conversations, so that we are available to have that conversation when it resonates with that student. And that's something that we've done, um, over the past two years. We will continue to look at that, and we are trying to just be very responsive to, to student needs.
Are there social skills that you've noticed since COVID? Sorry, are there social skills that you've noticed since COVID that really need reinforcement, not only by the teachers, but by families, by the entire community? Like, how can we support the social needs of our K-12 students? There have to be some, is there a common thread that we can all help with?
I think, you know, Kim and Chris can also talk about it too, but I definitely, I definitely see, um, you know, time management and, um, just like kind of the executive functioning skills. Some of our students are really struggling with that in this new environment. That's live and in real time, and, um, you know, is, is, is very different. Um, I think we've also seen some behavioral, um, you know, issues over, over the course of this year, some that maybe we weren't expecting, uh, maybe with our ninth-grade students or our 10th-grade students, relationships, how to get along. We haven't, a lot of our students haven't been practicing that, um, every day in, in real life for the past year and a half. So, um, certainly some developmental issues along those lines.
Christina, we heard, you know, from, from, you know, the parents earlier, concerns about the social-emotional health of the children, um, over the last, you know, 18 months. Um, are you seeing that side of things? Are you seeing like an increase in things like anxiety, depression, uh, those type of issues?
Yeah, I, I think we, we are seeing, um, an increase in some areas that, um, we weren't expecting. Um, we, you know, eating disorders and stuff like that, which is not just a Byram Hills, you know, situation. It's, it's a national phenomenon. Uh, this just comes to mind because it's something we were talking about today. Uh, but as a people personnel team, where we meet, uh, weekly to discuss students, um, you know, those, those meetings have been longer, definitely. And I think it's because we are having to talk about students and their issues in a way that's different, because we didn't, you know, the last year and a half is a very different circumstance for a lot of students. And what families are able to do to support students looks very different, um, in this day and age. So it's just a very different world, and I think we could typically predict a lot more than we can right now. We're kind of meeting things at face value and trying to figure out the, the best solution and the right people to, um, to help, help students along the way.
I think it partly comes from recognizing the transition of kids who may have been somewhat isolated during COVID, which was difficult unto itself, but then another difficult transition to go back out in the world. You just don't, it's not riding a bike. Socializing with others and figuring out your place in the world and finding, like, your friend groups, all of that stuff that was difficult for them. So I think from a parent perspective, to recognizing that transition and how neither one was easy. It's not easy just because they're back in school. It's about learning, learning to be a new person in a new environment all over again.
Yeah, and being intentional about some of the things we're putting in the place to help those students through our professional support faculty that we have in the building. And it includes the guidance department, our school psychologists, social workers, and of course, the building administration, really working and being aware of and talking about students and what we're noticing, and putting things in place to help them. Uh, Lara, were you?
I just want to say too, it's, um, just remarkable about the, the staff and the administration that this board definitely recognizes, like, look how late everybody's here, how hard you've all worked through the pandemic and all the planning that goes into it. I'm just wondering how you find the faculties acclimating to this new, uh, schedule in, in both schools and, and, you know, taking the temperature, about changes and how they're doing after coming back full-time and all of that. I mean, I guess they were here full-time, but having the students back full-time.
Yeah, I think from, uh, the high school, what they're seeing is they are just happy to have all of their students back in front of them. And for them, that feels like it's a win, uh, coming off of last year. Uh, I think, working within this new schedule, they feel like they're really just happy to, um, feel like almost normal teachers again. So there's a little bit of pressure that's off, uh, but again, right, there's, I think there's a, an overall tension just in, you know, just in general everywhere. Um, and that's certainly, you know, our teachers are human. So I, I do feel like they're, they're in a much, uh, better place than the tension that we all faced last year. You know, every, every day coming in, you weren't sure if you were gonna see me or Kristen or Colleen telling you, you know, "It's time to quarantine," and what that meant. So I think that there's, uh, definitely a relief, uh, in that sense.
Similar to the middle school. Um, I, I do think they also, faculty understands that this year, um, it's their charge to also support their students to re-acclimate to school in general. It's been a year and a half where they haven't had the experience of school and the structures of school. And we've seen that in, um, sometimes some of the behaviors of the students. So teachers realize that they're, they're charged with the academic growth, but also that social-emotional and development, age, age-appropriate development for our kids at the middle school. And so they're, you know, we're, we're, we're meeting together, we're coming up with plans, and, and it, it's students-first, which feels good. And they, they are, they're so excited that the kids are back in school.
Just a quick guidance-related question. So we have a lot of resources within Byram Hills for mental health. Sometimes you need to refer students externally. And we've had some regional conversations that there's a real issue around capacity, around services that are in the county and the broad, you know, region. Do you, do you see that? Do you, do you agree with that?
We, we do hear some parents will report, uh, taking months to get in with a practitioner. And, um, I think that's where, when we hear that, um, we kind of pool together as a team and try to find somebody, uh, that, that the student can meet with, um, you know, faster than that. Um, but it is definitely a concern, and, uh, it's, I don't think it's going away anytime soon.
Yeah, it's on our list of advocacy items to really try to figure out. It's just, it's broader than any one district, it's really the whole system.
Right, yeah, right.
Now, the social worker's not there anymore, right?
Correct.
Yeah, we're in the process of interviewing.
Just recently.
Yeah, just recently, so, uh, we do feel like, um, you know, hopefully we'll have somebody in place sooner rather than later.
We anticipate having somebody in that position, like, within the month. Not this month, the next month, within a month.
Do you feel like the X Pod has allowed for some of the social, and the SDL allowed for some of the social and emotional component? And I know Mentor does, but are there other opportunities at the high school to integrate maybe in, in an English class or something that everyone has to take? The social and emotional component. Since the classes are a little longer, I wonder if there's some activities that can reinforce some of the positive behaviors?
They are doing a lot of that in Mentor for freshmen, right?
I said freshman, and that's not habit, but I'm just wondering, the sophomores didn't have the full Mentor.
That's so true.
No, you know, one of those things that we spoke about was the importance of extracurriculars and going back, uh, to have another club fair. We had, you know, the first school-wide club fair ever in, uh, September, but knowing that we need to almost reintroduce this constantly, because there's kids, there's sophomores that have gone through and have no idea how those, those clubs work. So in that regard, yes, put, you know, having those club fairs again. Going in through Mentor, um, working with, uh, you know, with our freshmen, it's very easy. But again, to your point, it is a challenge of reaching the sophomores, the juniors, and the seniors. But luckily, what we have seen, and Christine mentioned, Christina mentioned, is that they do have access to guidance at that time. And they are working out a lot of those issues there.
And I do want to be mindful of the board's, uh, agenda ahead. You still have a few more items to cover, and it's getting late, so.
They all have to be back at 7:00.
And they all have to be back at 7:00. So any other final questions for our amazing middle school principal, high school principal, and guidance chairperson, uh, before releasing them?
I will miss you all.
Thank you, and thank, please send our extended thank you to all the faculty and the staff. I mean, but you, we're the platinum standard because of you guys.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Can I ask?
Congratulations, Ira, best of luck.
We'll miss you.
25-second pause.
Yeah.
Let's see, we are on policy, so we're going to make, um, one adjustment, which I guess we need a motion for probably, um, to remove from the agenda 11.2, because it deserves a little bit of a longer discussion, and we can do that in January from a timing standpoint.
Let Ira make the motion, since it's his last.
Ah, yes.
Well, what else do you need to do? Is that it?
That's it in terms of changes, yep.
Move to amend the agenda by deleting, by tableting 11.2.
Second?
On favor?
I mean, whatever.
All right, we'll come back to that. So why don't we go to policies, um, and Tim will give a very quick overview, and then just take any questions. Um, I think I have one, but that can wait probably for the next meeting, because it's a first read.
Sure, so there were, uh, some policies that are for a second read, which, um, we discussed at the last meeting, and that's around smoking tobacco use and the use of smoking devices on school premises, and, um, two addendums to the data privacy policy. And, um, you know, I think those are all pretty straightforward that we discussed at the last meeting. And then there are four policies, uh, for first read around, uh, textbook selection and adoption, library and resource material selections, and, uh, public comment at board meetings, and agenda preparation and dissemination. So I could go into depth.
Move to approve as a second read policy, 1530. Move to approve as a first read policies, 4511, 4513, 1230, and 2242.
Second.
All favor? All right, actually, let me ask first, any, any questions? Because I have one, but, uh, again, so my one question, Tim, and, and we can talk about this, I'm perfectly comfortable talking about it next time, because it's probably a little bit of a lengthy discussion, but just in the textbook selection and adoption, to just understand, like, the definition of what falls in the realm of what gets board approval, what falls in the realm of it's not necessary to get board approval, and just really understand if there, you know, what the gray areas are, just so that we, we have a sense of that. So if you want to talk about that next time, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I just, that's the one thing I raised when I read through the policies.
Yeah, and I'll just say in brief, um, it's, I scoured, uh, the, the state regulations around this, and this is their definition, and that's about all it says, it speaks to it. So we have to make some of those decisions about what it is. And one thing that I, I see in the definition is that, that's the material that is required for students. And so that's one area that we think about. So if I'm adopting, for example, a math program at the elementary grade that all of our students are required to engage in, then that is something that needs board approval. But when we're talking about other materials, for example, the classroom library that an elementary teacher may have, that's something that not every student is going to be engaged in, and that we're making every student read.
Or novels that change at the high school.
Or that novels that change at the high school. And, you know, if there's a case where, and we've had this occasionally, it comes up once every, I don't know, half a dozen years, um, someone may complain about a particular book in a class that we're reading, and Mr. Smith, the, the English chairperson, will give an alternate book for that student to read. So in essence, we're not requiring students to read that particular book. So it's the required piece that we believe is where the line is in terms of what the board needs to adopt. Other things that are not required, for example, the library resources and materials. That's not something we're making students read, all those books in the library, but they're accessible to students if they choose to read them. And that, to us, is the distinction in, in what this policy is, uh, what we're trying to clarify in this policy.
Got it, yeah, because it's this umbrella, like, rule from long ago, but the disaggregation of content that's happened in education makes it almost virtually impossible. And, and nor would you want a situation where you're, where you're literally, like, policing every piece of, um, of curricula that comes into the school, because it would be unmanageable.
Exactly, right.
Okay, all right.
Does that help with?
That's helpful, and I'll look at it again, and we can have another discussion next time, too.
Sure, we can discuss it at the second read.
Okay, so all favor, oh, anybody, any other questions?
We voted already.
Oh, you voted, okay.
Yeah.
So good, we're good, all right.
Thank you.
So why don't we go to, um, oh, 11.1, Tim again.
Is that hardship waiver?
Yes.
And I'll be brief on this. So, uh, last year, the board approved a hardship waiver, so let me see if I can explain this concisely without going through all the entire APR regulation. But what this has to do is there's an element in state regulations around teacher evaluations that requires a teacher to be evaluated, um, at least one time by what's called an independent evaluator. That means if I'm a math teacher at the high school, I need to have one of my observations be done by an administrator who is not in the high school. So that might mean that Kim Lappel has to come over to the high school and observe me. So we have a whole system that I organize every year to have administrators traveling to other buildings to observe other teachers in the other buildings. Um, last year, we, um, asked for a waiver from the state, and they offered a waiver, um, because of COVID. And we did not want our bill, our administration out of the building, we needed to manage the buildings. And we still feel we're in that situation where we need to keep our administrators in the school buildings. So we want to, again, apply for this waiver, which would change our APR. Um, the state does allow for it. And instead, we still will do that eval, that observation. It will just be done by an administrator in the building. So if I'm a math teacher, Lisa Pellegrino or Chris Walsh or one of the APs would, um, do that observation of me instead of Kim Lappel coming over and doing it. That's how we used to do it before the new state regulations, anyway. So, um, I don't think it's a big change. We will still have a rigorous evaluation process of our teachers. So I'm asking the board to approve this amendment to our APR, that I will then submit our application to state, and assume, I, I'm pretty confident we will get that, um, approved by the state.
Move to approve.
Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks, Tim. Staff, any staff reports?
Oh, two, but, um, you know what, Tim? I know that I start on slide 170. I'm going to do the demographers report next time, because it's really interesting, just to, um... I would like to have cake to celebrate Ira, and as much as I would like to wait until midnight so that I could count the calories for tomorrow instead of today, I think we are going to have it today. So, um, I just wanted to give a COVID update, so, Tim, if you maybe started my slide 180, um, just to talk about active cases, quarantine individuals, tests to stay and tests out of quarantine, because those are important right now. Um, so if you look at slide 180, we have had, to the right-hand side on the bottom, total positive cases in September, 49 in the district, and district cases requiring quar, quarantine. Now, that is a case 11 requiring quarantine. There could have been three or four kids in that quarantine for each of those cases. That's where we are right now. We are seeing some, um, increase in cases at the elementary level. Um, and, and sometimes the quarantines are also because family members have COVID and the kids are out, right? So this is not always the case that it's our kids, but...
It's interesting statistics that the, the population that could not get vaccinated has a higher...
Has a higher number, right, exactly. Um, if you look at the, you know, students positive, the 28 at Wampus and Coleman Hill versus the 10 between the middle school and the high school. It's not a lot of middle school and high school kids when you look at the numbers. Um, and then the next thing that I just want to talk about is student highlights. So if you can go two slides away, um, first of all, what a wonderful time we had at the man who came... First of all, what a wonderful time we had at the man who came to dinner. I would actually watch it again, even though it was like three hours. It was fantastic, and there was so much talent on that stage, and Jake Levy, I, I just don't know how he memorized all of those lines. I really don't. But, but even with masks on, they were absolutely outstanding. So I just want to congratulate our kids. It was so nice to have a live production here, and the next page too, Tim, is some pictures of them in action, which was great.
The sets are beautiful, too.
Oh, yes. How beautiful. And I also want to thank our teachers, Kyle Banks, we had Liz Morris at the elementary school, we had, oh my God, Daniel Brooks at the middle school. Danielle's been a part of that for a long time. I mean, she was just incredible with the sets. We, we really, and thank you to Pete, who really supported all of them and that work that they did, that was pretty Herculean. Next, Boston College, Here I Come, Bobby Chicoine and his family for Division One baseball and his signing day. Congratulations to you, we're so proud of you for that. The slide after that, Tim, you know, I just have to still show all of these, I can't, I can't stop showing all of these pictures. You could fly through them, Tim, but just so we could see, you know, the state, look at that picture on the left, and that's like, that's such a beautiful picture to me, that smile captures everything, and the invitation for the town and the state championships, and they were in the frosty parade and in front of the town hall, and then the last one of these girls in front of the Byram Hills State Champs. And that's really for everybody out there in, who's watching at home for, I know you saw the beginning when we were celebrating these girls, and they've seen these pictures 10 times over, but I just wanted it in our, in our archives, that this was a really special occasion for all of us. And as I said, I will discuss the demographers report in our next meeting.
Sounds good. Any other staff reports? No, okay. Board reports, anybody have a board report?
Laura and I had a very good meeting. We went to the sport liaison meeting, and there was great dialogue about making sure we represent all sport teams and all, and all clubs in general that, that were fair and equitable, and because that's part of making everyone feel a part of an inclusive community. So I, I know that we were heard, and I, and I saw a lot of change from that meeting.
That's great.
Kudos to Rob for running those great meetings.
Thank you, Lori. So that brings us to communications, 14.1. I will report that there were, there was one phone call regarding bus safety that I had, and then 45 emails received from 27 individuals, mainly on vaccination, clinic, and masking. Any other communications to report? Then we go to approve the minutes for November 2nd, 2021. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
A second? Any comments?
Oh, abstain. Abstain from the minute.
Okay, sure. So all in favor? And then extension? Lara? Good. And with that, motion to adjourn.
So moved. I will miss you all at this table. It's been my honor to work with you.
The honor has been all over.
Thank you, Ira.
Thank you.
We need a second. Second.
All in favor? All right, good night.
Let them eat cake.
That's right.
Yes, it's for Ira.
All right.
All right, it's cake time, Ira?